I would call to order the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for July 10, 2013. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Pill?
Here.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Here.
Commissioner Fleet? Commissioner Anton? Commissioner Van Buren is here. And Chairman Richard?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay. If you will please all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While I have you standing, you've got to be sworn in tonight. So if you'd raise your right hand, I swear that any testimony I give this evening shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do.
Okay? And I would ask you to silence any and all electronic devices. Also, when you give testimony, we have a sign-in sheet up there for you. So if you would sign in. Okay, I think that takes care of the housekeeping. Under new business, planning and zoning...
We don't have minutes to approve. Is that correct?
No minutes.
We don't have minutes to approve.
So we'll just carry that over until next meeting?
Yes.
Yeah. Do you want to motion on that, John?
No.
Okay. New business, planning and zoning, item 13-017, Wesley Campton regarding the property located at 222 North Cass Avenue for the following. A, special use permit request to operate a dentist's office on the ground floor in the B1 limited business district. Item B, zoning code variance request to reduce the number of required off-street parking stalls for the purpose of operating a dentist's office in the B1 limited business district. Mr. Campton?
Yes. Public speaking's never been my thing, so I apologize if I'm really nervous.
Not to be nervous, sir. We're...
I'll sign in.
We don't fight. We're more nervous than you are.
And... Okay.
Just a reminder, though, since you are asking for a variance, state law requires that you address the hardship as to how and why you need the variance.
The parking variance?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Well, let me start by thanking the members of the board and all the commissioners for being here today and hearing my application for the move, potential move to 222 North Cass. Just a... And I'll keep this as short as sweet. I know everybody's here after hours. A little bit about the history of my dental practice. I bought it two years ago in May 2011. And it's been in Westmont. It was Dr. Paul Kemp's previous dental practice, and it's been in Westmont for about 25 years. It was another doctor's office for about 10 years before it was Dr. Kemp's, and he had it for about 15 years. It was located in the Jewel parking lot, just across Ogden. And then, right now, it's located at 519 North Cass, where it's been for about 14 years. And so we have a long history in Westmont. A couple of months after I bought the building, a dentist... That I bought the dental practice, a dentist bought the entire building. And that dentist is a specialist, but plans on doing some gentle dentistry and non-specialist work as well. So we just haven't had a very good relationship ever since. And I think it was, you know, that's another conversation. But we just haven't been able to come together on things, and so I've unfortunately had to move. About 80... Between 70 and 80 percent of my patients, we can't get... It's hard to get an accurate tally on that, but between 70 and 80 percent of my patients are residents of Westmont. We have... And also, depending on what you consider active patients, whether it's somebody that we've seen within six months, and that's what... How the dental community kind of defines it. But in general, if you've seen a patient within the past two years, we kind of consider that a semi-active patient as well. So depending on how you define it, we have between 2,000 and 3,000 active and semi-active patients. So we see a lot of people. So with that, obviously, there's the parking variance, and we would be bringing a lot of people through the course of the year into the downtown area. So I'll address the parking issue first, as far as accommodating that kind of, you know, ingress and egress of traffic and people, if you will. There's about... And I have this in the application, but there's... I think it's 43 or 38. But there's about 40 spots in a public parking lot directly across the street. I think we're setting up for the Beer Garden in there right now for the Taste of Westmont. And over the course of the last month and a half, we've periodically been going over there. And it might be because it's summer that I started looking, and maybe when the schools in session, they're taking up more of those spots. But there's about 33, 34 vacant spots available on average, no matter when you go there, depending on the day. There's three street spots directly in front of the building. And on average, I would say a good number to use for those is there's been about 1.5 available. Sometimes there's two cars parked in those three. Sometimes there's one. But we've been going over there every few hours for about the past month, all the days that we're here. So there's... And that's directly in front. Across the street, off-street, and down the block off-street, there seems to be plenty of parking. The building itself, 222, has 11 spots. And I think the paperwork that the village has, has that as nine or 10. But there are... There's 10 that have lines, and one of them is a handicap. And then there's another, a good, probably, I would call it about 12, 13 feet at the end that doesn't have an outside line before you get to the alley that I've... In the pamphlet, I've included as a spot. Somebody could easily park there. It's not a dumpster space or anything like that. And it's well within three or four feet off the alley. So there's... The building has 11 spots. And then there's a... I saw a picture of the rear of the building in the pamphlet. There's a gravel lot behind the building that has... You can easily accommodate... If you were efficient about it, you could probably get 20 cars in there. But if you're inefficient with it, you can easily get 12 to 15 cars in there. The 11 spots that the building has, a lot of the members of the dance studio are not supposed to park on that side. The dance studio just to the north?
North.
They're supposed to park on their side, but because there's just not an issue, they're kind of just parking wherever there's available ample parking right now. And then the hair salon has, I think, eight of those spots designated of those 11. But the hair salon only has two stations active right now, and has only had two stations active for quite some time. So I think that takes their requirement significantly down, but they do have the empty stations in there. And then with the gravel, my employees have no issue, and as well as myself, I have no issue parking in the gravel parking lot, so long as the village doesn't have an issue with it. And so I don't think that there's going to be an issue with parking at all. I think that there's plenty of parking there, especially in the public parking lot directly across the street. And then a little bit about how we see patients. Like, I've gone to the restaurants here, Amber. You know, I'm sure everybody's been to Amber or the restaurants directly across the street. And sometimes that public lot gets filled up real quick. And these lots down this way towards the train station, and then the on-street parking gets filled up pretty quick. But a little bit north down the street, and then that public parking lot down there, that just doesn't seem to be an issue. But unlike the restaurants that, you know, are extremely busy from 5:00 to 7:00, and they have a large amount of people coming for dinner in those times, we have a steady flow, a steady flow, a steady ingress and egress of traffic and patients that come in. And I think that that is something that is conducive to the parking. It will not clutter. It will not overfill the existing parking spaces, but yet bring in a lot of people to the downtown area. As I mentioned earlier, we have the, depending on how you look at it, 2,000 to 3,000 active patients. And we see some of those patients three and four times a year. We see some of those patients four and five times a year. When you add it all up, we have about 6,000 to 7,000 patient visits. So it's a nice 2 to 3 people per hour, and that's all we see. But it's on the hour, every hour, you know, 10 to 7. Right now, we've shortened our hours due to issues that we have with the building, and we put off a lot of work, so we're only there three days a week. But the office, for 15 years, was open Monday through Friday. And we plan to, you know, once we make the move and get settled and stuff like that, so long as we're approved, we plan to, you know, be open and bring in that steady inflow of patients. And people of Westmont, like I said, is we're in that 70 to 80 percent range of Westmont. Our patient pool lives in Westmont. And then we have some in Downers and the other local areas and stuff like that. So we think that... We know that the village has to look at parking, and the village is also looking at tax dollars. And even though the medical and dental fields don't necessarily bring in the tax dollars to the village, there are things that we can do to bring in some tax dollars. It's not going to be... We're just not going to... Not one of those businesses that will have raised millions of dollars in revenue. But we can sell toothbrushes, and we... There are things that we can sell, and they're $100 toothbrushes, the Sonicare's and stuff like that, that maybe some of you already have. There's things that we can do to raise a small amount of revenue, maybe $10,000, $15,000 a year. But I think something that... Where we really help is we can help introduce people to the downtown area, and we can reach out to the local businesses. And this is what I plan to do, if you give me the opportunity, is to really reach out to the local businesses and to buy gift certificates to, you know... You know, there's the dance studio. Patient comes in... Like, right now, I do a lot of stuff with the Dunkin' Donuts, where here's a $5 certificate for Dunkin' Donuts. In Evergreen Park, in my Evergreen Park office, we're doing movie theaters and bowling nights and things like that, and Starbucks. But we can do those same things, incorporate those same things here to the local businesses of Westmont. And I think that, you know, if I give, you know, even if it's just a $3, $3 off, you know, an ice cream cone at La Lali's Bakery or something, or a free dance consultation, if something like that, even if... Even however insignificant it may seem, a $5 certificate, you know, at Neat, the new Neat Restaurant Bar and Grill, well, I'm introducing somebody, potentially introducing somebody to that business that's going to go again, that's going to come back again. You know, the businesses survive and thrive on their own. But I like to reach out to all the local businesses and maybe do some cross-marketing with them. You know, not every business you can work something like that out with, but we can start by gift certificates, and I'm sure they'll be happy to sell them to me. And I'm more than happy to, you know, hand them out instead of other things that we do. And I think that... I think that we, with our steady flow of just 2 to 3 patients an hour, I don't think that the ingress and egress of traffic will be minimally affected. Parking will be minimally affected. But yet, at the same time, this is a nice way to bring some people that might have never visited some of these local businesses, or might just need to get a little bit more comfortable. And then, you know, with coming to and from the areas, like, ooh, let's, you know, let's stop at Neat. Let's check out this dance studio. Let's, you know, try La Lali's Bakery. We haven't been there in a while. So I think we're going to generate some foot traffic as well. Sorry for... It sounded like a windfall. I know, but... So I... Those are some of the things that we think that we can help address, those two main areas. And then there's some other things that I think are nice things for the resident of Westmont, is that I'm one of the few offices in Downers, Hinsdale, Clarendon Hills, Westmont, that sees patients. We're regularly in the office until about 9:00 o'clock at night. So it's nice... If a child falls off their bicycle and chips their tooth, there is a dentist that they can see at 6:00, 7:00 o'clock at night, because that's something that needs immediate attention, or that child can very easily lose that tooth if we're seeing a dentist the next day. So I think that from just dental services, us being there and being more visible with the local community by being in downtown, you know, I think there's a lot of benefits there to the residents. And I... With that, I'm open.
Okay.
Be free to answer any questions.
Staff, Jill?
Sure. As was noted in the staff memo, the gravel parking lot is not permitted to be counted toward parking requirements, but the employees will likely park there. And if the applicant were to pave the parking lot, it would likely trigger stormwater detention, which would be a significant financial burden. Due to the hours of operation, the number of clients that are proposed per hour, and the available public parking that the applicant mentioned, staff does not have concerns about the parking variation. And if approved, we'd recommend that the applicant get involved with the Chamber of Commerce and the Downtown Business Alliance to get more involved in the downtown.
And for... If I may, the practice was involved in marketing with the... With Westmont for over 15, 20 years. And when I... As I was saying, right when I bought the place, and then the dentist bought the place, we've been planning this potential move for a long time. And we thought it was going to happen a few years back, and we thought we might be heading over to Downers or something like that.
Say that.
Right, exactly. We don't want... Everybody, all our patients, you know, because when we're kind of, you know, hopefully this will go over well, because we've kind of been building them up to the new downtown thing as we've been going. But so that's why we just kind of... You know, like in Evergreen Park, I'm much more involved in the community and stuff like that. And I like to get involved and really just get, you know, my staff into the schools and dental, you know, hygiene instruction, oral hygiene instruction for everybody, just to, you know, just to be a service to the community. And we would like to get much more involved with that.
Okay, very good. Let's start with Commissioner Thomas.
Before we do that, Chairman, just should we make a call to the public? See if they're saying... I don't see anyone...
I don't see any public here. Okay. Is there anybody from the public who will speak on this issue? Thanks, John. Nope, we'll close the public comment.
Go ahead. You did fine.
Thanks, Al.
When I first heard about it and pulled up in front of your office and that, my first thought was, why so close to another dentist? Because just south, you have another practice net. But then, as I watched and read the material and the packet and that, you're coming locked and loaded.
Yeah. Like, we have our patient pool...
Have your own people.
Yeah. We're not a threat to any existing business, because we're pretty busy with who we have.
Right. And I have no problem with the parking, just like in all the other people that come before us. I'm just... I'm in favor of it and wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pill?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick questions. If approved, what would be... It looks like there'll need to be some build-out in there.
Yes.
What type of schedule do you see? How long that taking? And when would you anticipate opening?
Well, I have never... I've never done a build-out in Westmont or the entire... In DuPage County. But I flip homes on the side in the city of Chicago. So I have a complete construction crew and a lot of construction background behind me. So I'm not intimidated by that at all. This build-out could be done in 30 days or less, but there's going to be, you know, things always come up. I'm hoping to have no more than three weeks of construction in there, but I don't know what... How long it'll take to get permits and the plans. I've been speaking with a local architect, but who's in Downers, and I'd like to take a look at some architects in Westmont, because I really do want to grow with Westmont. I want to see Westmont grow, and I want to see the local businesses of Westmont grow. So if approved, the next day, you'll see me interviewing architects in Westmont, and we'll get some plans and permits together. And as long as the turnaround for the plans and permit process isn't too long, I could see us... I could see us being open before September 1st is the goal. I'd love to shoot for August 15th, but who knows? But I get things done quick.
Mm-hmm. I would strongly second Jill's comments about joining the chamber. I think that would be a good idea. And there's presently 230 Westmont businesses in the chamber, so it gives you a great chance to market and do some work and be a part of the downtown area, which has its own subcommittee on the chamber. So it'll give you a chance to see what's going on and what things the neighbors are thinking about and things like that. Other than that, I don't have a problem with the parking either. I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Commissioner Van Buren?
Good luck.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Well, I travel up Cass all the time, so I go by the building on a regular basis. And I've never really seen a huge problem in that area as far as parking goes. The only thing I can think of is with the new restaurant or reopening a restaurant in that area, that it might, in the evening hours, affect you. But other than that, I don't think there's going to be an issue.
Yeah, I think we're going to be fine. And, you know, if we have to do a valet thing or something like that down the road, that just means that downtown is just really thriving, and that's just more... I see it as more people that are going to drive by and see the office.
And one thing I did want to make comment was that you're right. The parking lot that's across the street, that is rarely if ever full. I mean, I don't think I've ever seen it full.
Is that true in the school year, too? Is it... Because I wasn't looking that it's...
They're not supposed to park.
Yeah.
The staff and teachers are not.
Okay.
Yeah. So I'm sure you'll have parking available there as well.
Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you.
And I would also echo my fellow commissioners' comments that I'm very happy to see you move in there, and I'm very pleased with you bringing this amount of people into our downtown area.
Thank you very much.
It's... I consider it a win-win for both of us.
Thank you.
And parking, absolutely no problem whatsoever. Any further comments? Okay. We need a reading of the findings of fact, if we could have, please.
222 North Cass requests for a special use to operate a dentist's office on the ground floor in the B1 limited business district. Criteria number one, the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. All business operations will be conducted indoors and with limited hours of operation. The proposed use will not generate adverse noise, traffic, odors, light, or other adverse impacts to the public. Criteria number two, the special use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. The proposed use will occupy an existing tenant space previously operated by a commercial sales and service business. All operations will be conducted indoors, and this proposed use will have no adverse impacts on property values or the use of surrounding properties. Criteria number three, the establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. The subject tenant space is completely built out and is located in the fully developed central business district. This proposed use will not impact the orderly development and improvement of surrounding property. Criteria number four, adequate utilities, accessways, drainage, and/or other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. This property is already served by all necessary utilities, accessways, and other necessary facilities. Criteria number five, adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. Public access will occur through a main door adjacent to the public sidewalk along Cass Avenue. The property is accessible through public bus and train transportation. Sufficient public parking exists in the immediate area. Criteria number six, the special use shall, in all other respects, conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located, except as such regulations may in each instance be modified by the village board pursuant to the recommendation of the plan commission. The proposed use will conform to all other zoning requirements, except for a parking variance, which is sought.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. The findings of fact for a special use are hereby adopted. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval through the Board of Trustees, planning and zoning, item 13-017, item A, special use permit request to operate a dentist's office on the ground floor in the B1 limited business district.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Fidesco. Question on the motion. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner... Oh, Chairman Richard?
Yes.
Sorry. Sorry, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
And we now need a reading of the findings of fact for a zoning code variance.
222 North Cass Avenue, request for a variance to reduce the number of required off-street parking for a dentist's office in the B1 limited business district. Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. The property is located in the fully developed central business district, and there is no room to provide additional off-street parking. Existing off-street parking is shared with other tenants. Applicants' business and most other retail or service businesses cannot operate from this location without this variance. Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. The applicant did not self-create this hardship and would face a similar hardship in most other locations in the central business district. Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. Limited off-street parking is available for applicant's use. Additionally, there is ample public parking on Cass Avenue and in an adjacent public parking lot. Granting this variance will not alter the character of the area.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. The findings of fact for a zoning code variance are hereby adopted. I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, item B, a zoning code variance request to reduce the number of required off-street parking stalls.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, seconded by Commissioner Pill. Question on the motion. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Chairman Richard?
Yes.
All right, sir. You have our recommendation for approval. And staff can tell you when you go before the committee of the whole on the Board of Trustees.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And you don't have to worry at all about your speaking voice. You do quite well.
I'm just extremely nervous in these situations. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Planning and zoning, item 13-018, Sun Life Assurance Company of Canada, regarding the property located at 999 Oakmont Plaza Drive, for the following. A, zoning code variance request to increase the number of allowable signs in the ORR Office Research District. B, zoning code variance request to increase the maximum gross square footage of signage in the ORR Office Research District.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Mike Quaid. I'm with NEI Hifman. I'm the property manager of 999 Oakmont. And we are applying for three variations. As you just read, we'd like to install a new six-panel tenant monument sign perpendicular to Pasquinnelli Drive, and we're looking for your support for that. There are really two hardships that we're facing at 999 Oakmont that the monument sign will help us with. The first one, and probably the most important, is a financial difficulty. Currently, the building is 50 percent... Excuse me, it's 60 percent occupied, dropping down to 50 percent in another couple of months at the end of September. So we have a long road to go. We have about 50,000 square feet of office space that we need to lease, and a monument sign will aid in that effort.
Okay, very good. Staff?
The character of the proposed monument sign is in keeping with the architectural design of the other signs that are in the area. It's a low-style, ground monument sign with landscaping.
It's a low-style ground monument sign with landscaping, and it should help with identification. As you probably saw when you were out there, there is no sign, so it's easy to drive by. And the two wall signs are facing north and east, and it doesn't really help with identification of the building.
Okay, very fine. And we'll go to the public for any comments, seeing nobody in the audience. We'll close a public comment. Let's start with Commissioner Fidesco.
Yeah, I, driven by the building, and I've often wondered, who's in that building? You don't have a clue, you know? And so I'm really for having a sign, and especially since it's going to be similar to the other type of signs that are around it.
Excellent.
Give you an idea of who might be in those buildings.
Perfect. That's exactly why we're doing it. You got it.
Yeah, because I mean, I, I just, I just couldn't understand why there wasn't one or a request for that earlier, so.
Excellent.
That's, that's my only comment. I mean, I, as long as it's, you know, it's going to be basically attractive like many of the other signs, I don't have an issue whatsoever.
And I believe there is a picture in the packet of what the sign will look like, and also a picture of the building, so you can see, as Jill mentioned, there's many architectural features that are going to be carried over from the building into the monument sign.
We do have a, we do have a picture of it.
Oh, great, excellent.
Yeah. And I don't have any other comments, but thank you for your presentation.
Commissioner Van Buren?
No, I think it's a good idea, and I don't have any comments.
Commissioner Pill?
I also think it's a good idea and overdue, and would support it.
Commissioner Thomas?
I pulled up in front of the main entrance and without looking like that, I still didn't know, and that was the anchor. And I, I come to the front and still didn't know who your main tenant was, so I'm in agreement with your request and I agree with your hardship.
Great. Thank you.
That's all.
And I myself, it's a shame you're coming in when you are, because in a couple of months, we're going to have all of your problems solved by changing our village code, I think.
That's up to you.
But anyhow, I love your sign. I love the address on it. It's addressing, like I say, we're going to address most of these things of what your sign is taking care of right now, and it just looks good. Every time I go to Papa Do's, I just wonder, is that a single-tenant building? Is there more than one person in there or what? You've got a beautiful building.
It's almost a no-tenant building, actually.
Well, that's not good.
No, it's not good.
So we'll do everything we can to help you.
Perfect. We appreciate that.
Okay, any further comments? Okay, if, we have two variances here, and I'm told that we have a reading, we will have a reading of the findings of fact that will cover both variances.
Perfect. 999 Oakmont Plaza Drive, request for a variance to increase the number of allowable signs and to increase the maximum gross square footage of signs in the ORR Office Research District. Criteria number one: the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it is located. The property is improved with a large commercial building housing multiple commercial tenants. Two wall signs currently exist which identify the anchor tenant for this building. However, no signage exists to identify various other tenants which occupy or will occupy this building. Non-anchor tenants cannot yield a reasonable return on their investment in this building if they are unable to alert the public as to their location via appropriate signage. Criteria number two: the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. The situation is unique in that the single building houses multiple commercial tenants, and wall signage currently exists identifying the anchor tenant, thus limiting signage options for the other tenants of this building. Criteria number three: the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The variances, if granted, will result in an increase in allowable signage by only 6.5%. Proposed additional monument sign complies with monument sign standards, is aesthetically pleasing, and is similar to other monument signs in the surrounding area.
If you agree with these readings, findings of fact for the variances are hereby adopted. I did have, John, if you could help me on this, I did have a question. We are granting a variance for the maximum gross square footage. Is that per, as to what's shown right here?
That's all signs combined that are allowed on the property, correct, Jill?
It's 6.5%.
Okay, have you given any thoughts, sir, to your, if you were to go with more tenants, where they might need signs? It looks like you've got, going to have a space for six.
The signage rights are based on a square footage amount, so we, the building's 117,000 square feet, and we have to run, run the numbers, but it'll probably be somewhere in the range of, if you're a 20,000-square-foot tenant, maybe a 10,000-square-foot tenant, you're allowed to have signage rights. So, so to answer your question, we don't know just yet. We still have to establish what that threshold will be.
But as, as it stands now, it looks like the six signs-
Correct.
-or space for six is, suits you just fine.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, very fine. Any further questions? Okay. Under planning and zoning item 13018, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, item A, a zoning code variance request to increase the number of allowable signs in the ORR Office Research District.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Fidesco. A question on the motion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner, Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes. Okay. Now, the findings of fact again cover this item B, so I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, item B, a zoning code variance request to increase the maximum gross square footage of signage in the ORR Office Research District.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, seconded by Commissioner Fidesco. Question on the motion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Phil?
Yes.
Mr. Fidesco?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes, and Chairman Richard?
Yes. All right, sir, you have our recommendations, and staff can tell you when you go before the Thursday Evening Committee of the whole.
Thanks so much.
Good luck to you. Fill your building up.
Will do. You guys have a great evening.
Thank you. You're on. Now, we don't bite, so you can relax.
Staff is proposing several amendments to the sign code tonight, following the commission's discussion earlier this year about improvements to the sign code. The suggested text and the location in the zoning code were included in the staff memo and can be revised with your input. I'll go over the six proposed amendments one by one, and please chime in with any questions or comments as we review.
Jill, before you get into it then, since there are these six amendments, Jill will pause after each one, and if you have any comments for it, please feel free to comment. Thank you, Jill.
You're welcome. The first text amendment is not allowing vinyl banners to be used as permanent signage. We've had this issue in the past, and so we just wanted to update the code to state clearly that vinyl signs are considered temporary signs and shall not be permitted as permanent signs.
Does this sound pretty good to everybody?
Yeah, I have a question on that, though. Is there a, a time limit in the existing code on that temporary sign?
Yes, there is. We try to keep an eye on it because the bond can't be returned until they take the banner down, so usually people get in touch with us to take it down on their own. But if they don't, you can always give staff a call, and we can make sure that they either have a permit or will take it down.
Yeah, because those signs don't last that long.
Right, exactly.
And you get tattered, so.
And that's why we don't want them to be used as permanent signs.
No.
The second text amendment has to do with monument signs. Currently, one identification sign is permitted per, per, per lot if they, if you only have one straight frontage. Corner lots are allowed to have two signs by right. So in this instance, we are recommending the use of more monument-style signs, similar to what you just saw over on, off Pasquenelli. And this would allow for non-corner lots, lots with only one straight frontage, to have two signs if the second sign is a ground sign in a monuments, in a monument style, not a pole sign.
Now, Jill, would this preclude pole signs going in new anywhere?
It would not. You would, if you chose to have one sign and it was a pole sign, you would be allowed to do that.
So we have nowhere, because I'm not a fan of them. I would like to see them banned outright.
And we could investigate putting that into the text amendment as well.
I don't know if anybody else would agree with me on this. John?
I'm not a policymaker.
No, I don't know if I was, if you were correcting me on a legal basis, sir.
No, I was just behind the scenes raising my hand that I, too, don't particularly like-
Okay.
...big pole signs, but I'm really not one to chime in on policy.
I don't know if any other commissioners would have an opinion-
Well-
-for or against any pole signs if-
I think most people would say that a monument sign is going to be more attractive, more formal-looking, and more in keeping with decor thoughts and, and looks. But I think the pole sign does have some advantages to it, particularly as speed limits go up. You know, like along Route 83 and even Ogden Avenue to an extent. It sometimes is a little easier to see, you know, if you're driving and some of these monument signs are relatively low to the ground, and if you're doing 35 or 40 miles or 45 miles an hour, it gets tougher to see it. So that's where the pole signs, I think, come into play a little bit. I think that clearly the monument signs provide a much dressier and easier-to-landscape look.
Commissioner Pill, just to address that very quickly, if you look at Pet Supplies Plus as a recent example, they have a monument, monument sign, and then they also have a wall sign. So it kind of captures your eye at both levels, down below, and then on this, as you're driving, you can also see it on the wall. And this would be allowed by right with this, with that type of-
That's, that's a great follow-up. I agree with that, yes.
I would suggest, Commissioner Pill, that on 83, I don't think we would need, I don't think we would ever see a pole signed up, because if you're going to have a sign on a, a second sign on a building, it's going to be a monument on Pasquenelli. And, but maybe along Ogden, but I think we just, didn't we just recommend some changes along Ogden on those?
The copperhead's a plan, I think, did.
Yeah.
There's, there's some coming up here, too. That'll be our next amendment.
Yeah, I wouldn't have any problem. I, I just wanted to point out that sometimes they do provide better visibility in higher-speed in, in situations.
I only had one comment about those, those signs. Ground signs, monument signs are great. I like them. The only thing is, in certain situations near corners, sometimes monuments actually become a hindrance-
Sure.
...to vision. So a pole sign in that case, you can actually see around a pole better than you can through a monument, you know?
Sure.
So in those cases, I would say, you know, at a case-by-case basis.
We have a corner vision triangle, which we give to people-
Yeah, the line of sight is already covered.
Right. So, so we make them, put, put them far enough back, like in this instance-
I'm saying is, they may not be able to put in a monument sign because of the line of sight.
Sure.
So they would have to go with a pole sign. So if you totally eliminate pole signs, you may have an issue.
Speaking well of pole signs, I would use the one just north of the Top Hat Grill at 60th Street, I think it is, is everything that's wrong with pole signs.
That's the Top Hat Grill, you mean?
Tap House.
Tap House.
In the Tap House.
Yeah.
Yeah. The one in that shopping center there, that should be cut down.
I would just say on that comment, you know, one of the difficulties is, if, if this does become a, a new regulation prohibiting pole signs, that, you know, you've got so many existing right now, and it's going to take decades to weed out those old pole signs and get a string of monument signs. So it's going to take some fortitude from commissioners and the board and a common mindset to stand your ground, because you can guarantee that applicants are going to come in asking for variances, saying, "Look at the character of the neighborhood. There's pole signs everywhere. How am I going to compete? I need to get my name out there. It's part of my national branding." You know, I can hear all the arguments already, and-
Yeah, I think, I think to, to not allow them would probably be a little bit overkill. I think that as it now stands, there's an encouragement on the part of staff when someone comes in for a sign variance or for signage, that they would be more encouraging of the, of the monument signs and the pole signs, but-
But it could be an option, though, that, that can be used, and so if you ban them outright, you're, you're tying your hands, you know? And as long as the staff encourages them another way, and the commissioners and trustees are on the same page, I don't think it'll be a problem, but it's a tool you'll be able to use, though.
Mm-hmm. Right, to, to do some positive encouragement.
Yeah. That's all I got. Okay, Jill.
Okay. Next, we'll go to ground sign height, which we were just discussing. One of the sections of the code allows for signs within 660 feet of Ogden Avenue and Route 83 to be up to 32 feet in height. And when we discussed this at the last meeting, the commission said that was, that was too high. And so our, our recommendation is to have a 16-feet height limitation for all ground signs, and then to allow signs within 660 feet of Route 83 to be up to 20 feet high. There is a elevation change along 83, and that might help people who want to advertise there to have a little bit more height. But the 16 feet seems to be sufficient. Downers Grove, their maximum is 15 feet, so it would be in keeping with that, along that commercial corridor.
Do you know how many signs we have in this town that are greater than 16 feet?
Quite a few. I, I, I wouldn't know that off the top of my head, but I do know that most of the new signs that we're seeing are lower and are more of the monument style, like Pet Supplies Plus, Chase Bank, a lot of the ones on Pasquenelli. So a lot of those are-
And would be like Standard Market.
Right.
But they'd have to come in and-
Get a vari-
...just buy it. Get a variance.
Right. And Standard Market came in for a variation anyway, for the number of signs and for-
Size and video, too.
Size and video, correct.
So does this- Does this mean then, well, I guess you, you grandfathered in.
Right.
Have it.
You'd still be allowed to change out panels.
Any change on your property, then?
Not any change on your property, any change to the signage or-
Just to the sign.
Typically, you can still change out panels on the sign, you just can't, if you were to get a new sign, that's when the, the ordinance would take effect.
Maybe we could have lightning strike all of the non-conforming signs?
Well, so this is really going to affect just pole signs.
Pretty much.
Because you're not going to have monument signs that are 30 feet high, so this pole sign. So if you figure that you want the base of the sign to be where kids can't mess around and change the letters, not that I've known anyone who's ever done that, but, you know, you're probably going to be around eight feet at the bottom of that, especially if you want, like Steve said, to see underneath it and for traffic and stuff. So now, with 16 feet, we're basically saying you can have an eight-foot pole sign.
Which is a pretty good size.
Yeah, it's good size, though. You can get a lot on that.
And it, the, the thinking behind not just standardizing at 20 across the board, so you're going to have 16 zones and 20-foot zones?
Just, it would be similar to where it is now. It would just, the Route 83 would be the only, and it's only properties within that, that, the, the lineal feet along Route 83 that would be allowed. And that's just because of the grade change. You know, we could delete that part, we could make it all the same.
Ogden goes to 16 feet, and along 83 goes to 20 feet.
Right, so everybody in the village would be 16 except for Route, Route 83.
I don't, I don't believe there's many signs on Route 83. They're pretty much all on the buildings.
There's a hotel sign, there's a couple, you just-
That would be the Best Western?
Best western, is there?
That would be about the only one that I can think of.
Yeah, there's not too many.
I don't think it's a building sign.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, the state could put signs up or but on their right of way, but we couldn't.
I don't think there's anything we could do about that, anyway.
And I don't think they typically allow them on their right of way.
Right.
I think the 20 feet is fine there. I can't decide if 16 feet is sufficient on Ogden.
At the last meeting, the Commission talked about being having a consistent appearance coming from Downers Grove because their maximum is 15, so it would be similar, and that way it wouldn't make a big jump as you come into Westmont.
Trying to think about all the different car dealers. They've got signs, what size theirs are. I don't think any of them look unattractive. I think they all look fine.
This can answer a question. This talks about self-supported ground signs, the maximum height's 20 feet.
Mm-hmm.
But I it sounds like the conversation is around pole signs, at least from what Commissioner Pill was talking about.
Where you want to have them raised off the ground before the sign starts.
Yeah.
So can you clarify that? Because it says grounds it says ground signs, which I take as a monument sign.
Well, when the code, when the original code talks about ground signs, that can include pole signs or monument signs. When we're talking about like the low signs, we refer to them as monument signs, and I'm not sure what the self-supported part is referring to.
Meaning it's not hanging off.
It's not hanging. It's not maybe it's not on a.
Right.
Car.
So a ground sign means what?
A ground sign can mean a pylon sign, a pole sign, a monument sign, anything that's from.
So you can have a monument sign 16 feet in height?
Technically.
Hmm. Pretty good size.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact.
Well, then you might violate the square footage.
True. The square footage helps regulate it as well.
You get that one, would that's probably the cross check to that.
Right.
I just wish I knew the car dealer heights.
Okay. The next, back to ground signs, one of the things that we talked about is that there is not a requirement for landscaping at the base of signs right now, so we added, number three, the sign base shall be surrounded by year-round landscaping. This could be in a box, or it could be planted in the ground, depending on how the sign is located, and number two, ground signs shall prominently display the building address with numerals that are a minimum height of six inches. This was suggested by the Chair, and the previous applicant for the variation used that, and it makes it very easy makes it much easier for people to identify the building and for emergency response.
I don't have a problem with that.
Very wise suggestion. Commissioner Thomas?
Right.
And then I think you had number three on there, that the sign base shall be surrounded by.
Year-round landscaping.
Year-round landscaping.
Mm-hmm, so that way you don't somebody just doesn't plant annuals, and then you don't see anything for the rest of the year. You want to you want to encourage evergreens, too. Okay, and then the last one is prohibiting wall box signs in the central business district. This is a extra note, interior illuminated box or panel signs with translucent acrylic faces shall not be permitted. Box signs shall only be permitted with completely opaque material backgrounds. One of the questions that we talked about was the amber sign because it's a it's a formed sign. Those types of signs would be allowed with with this. It's more the panel with the bright white translucent backgrounds that you see at night. And we also talked about prohibiting those completely, and the Commission felt like it was only necessary in the downtown to eliminate them.
I haven't found that.
Yeah, the box signs, I have no problem with whatsoever. Jill, I know I read this twice today. Isn't there somewhere in here where where they have multi-tenant signs that they will all have the same background?
We.
I thought it's.
We did talk about that.
I know I read that somewhere, and I'm trying to find it now.
We did talk about it at the last meeting, but I wasn't sure if there was a consensus on that, if everybody had agreed to have to require that for multi-tenant signs.
I think we somebody had a problem with people having a like a.
National logo.
National logo, right, right, that would would not fit in the same background as everybody else, if they get to stand out, you know.
I've seen it on some there's a multi-tenant sign where everybody has ivory backgrounds and black text, and then there's a big subway logo, and it just jumps out at you, but nobody else is, you know, was allowed to do that on the sign, so you can still do your own text and graphics with a neutral background. That's an option.
Well, again, I hearken back to the pole sign at 60th at that shopping center. There's seven or eight placards up there, each one a different color, and to be honest with you, it really detracts from it. It looks quite quite bad. So like I say, I thought I read that in here, and now it's I have.
It was probably in the minutes from the February 2013 meeting that was attached, and that's one of the subjects there.
Right.
Is there a possibility that we could have us have something written in that says if it's not a national logo, that it must be, you know.
Conform to one.
That's not fair to the little guy. The big guy comes in and has his logo.
That's discriminating based on content.
Okay.
Has to be content neutral.
I just didn't know, you know.
You can't regulate text. You can you can regulate the aesthetics of it, but you can't regulate the message.
Okay, so in that case then.
Commissioner Fidesco, we always get hammered with the thing that these big chains have their, I'm going to use McDonald's for the golden arches. You go down to Sedona, the golden arches are three foot in height, very low, buried in the landscaping, and McDonald's was told, put them that way or don't come into town. So I mean, it is a preview of the the village to delineate how they want their signs.
You do see it a lot in newer more newly developed communities where they kind of started with a fresh slate, like a Sedona. I see it in Colorado in some areas where there's no pole signs whatsoever, but to your point, you know, between a wall sign and an attractive monument sign, it does catch your eye. I think the problem is in the first several years or decades when you're going to have a conflict.
Right.
Between businesses with existing pole signs and monument signs if you choose to prohibit pole signs.
Right.
Would it be staff's opinion that when a person comes in for a sign, multi-tenant sign, that you would encourage them to strive at the very least?
I'd love to encourage that.
His intention to strive?
For sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would anybody else care to make a recommendation to add that? If not, then we'll just skip it.
Well, it's being done now, I think, isn't it?
Well, item number two on our agenda was they did that on their own.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, anybody have any further comments on Jill's presentation?
I guess for terms of making a motion, if I may, you can either make a motion to accept all of staff's recommendations as written in the memo dated July 10, 2013, and vote on that. You can vote to motion to accept the recommendations in that memo and have deletions and identify what it is, or you can add anything additional that was discussed tonight, such as prohibition on pole signs. Phil, it's wide.
Let's start with Commissioner Thomas. Would you care for any additions or deletions from staff's report?
Is it within our right or whatever to or duty to instruct them to encourage the same background, like the last issue that we just talked about, the background coloring of each each multi? Can we can we instruct staff to encourage them? But you really can't.
It's meaningless, but yes, you can.
Right, exactly.
But if someone comes up, Subway says it's our national branding, no, we're going to put our logo up there. There's nothing we could do about it.
Right. Okay.
Commissioner Pill?
I'm fine with Fides's.
I'm fine with Fides's.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yeah, I'm of the opinion that we should basically tell the national folks, you know what, if it's a multi-tenant sign, it's going to be a solid background and uniform colored background, and you deal with it. You cannot put your national logo or put whatever sign you want up there, but it's not going to be different than than that sign.
I would ask.
That's my opinion, and I feel that would make it cleaner, you know, if we're not allowed to 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 limit, you know, because that's, you know, you're limiting speech or, you know, if we're not allowed to do that, you know, by saying, you know, the national guys can do that, everybody else has to be different, well, then make it all everybody's got to be standard colored background, and nobody gets their logo.
You can still have your logo. You would just have.
Well, it just be it'd have to be the color of the, you know, it wouldn't be your national color, you know.
Right.
Be whatever color, you know, on a white background, you know.
But the logo would be on the building itself.
Yeah, the logo could be there, you know, if they have a different sign that conforms, but we're talking about the multi-tenant sign. We're not talking about their individual sign. If they have an individual sign, that's different than the multi-tenant sign where you have right now, as as the Chairman has said, you know, we I go by that sign more often than I do other signs in town, and that is ugly, you know, plain and simple. I mean, it's got every color in the world up there.
Well, I think that with the enlightened staff that we have, that it's not likely to happen again, and you're not going to do anything about the one that's there. So I suggest also that we accept it as the as was presented tonight.
Okay, I would entertain a motion that we recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, the staff. Help me out here, John, the.
It would be the staff recommendations contained in the July 10, 2013 memo to amend Appendix A, Article 11 of the Westmont Zoning Code regarding amendments to the Village of Westmont sign ordinance.
That's exactly the way I was going to phrase it. Okay, we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Pill. Do we have a question on a motion? May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Pill?
Yes.
Mr. Fidesco?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes. Any further staff?
This and the other items will be going to the July 11th or 25th Village Board Meeting, and the Village Board has just changed on July 11th to Village Board Meetings every other Thursday, so no more committee of the whole, correct, John?
Correct, and no more Monday voting meetings. So they're going to have a meetings now every other week, ever, I should say, every two weeks on Thursdays only.
Right.
And there'll be a first reading of ordinances, and if they're comfortable voting that night on something, then they'll vote. If it's somewhat complicated or controversial, they'll kick it till the next set of meetings, and there'll be a second reading.
Oh, okay.
Right.
This is a way to eliminate total number of meetings throughout the year, save a little money, and save applicants from coming back to two sets of meetings.
Right.
Sounds good.
And another cost savings, we passed out water bottles. We're trying to decrease our plastic bottle consumption, so and we have a new water filtered machine outside where you can fill up your water bottles for the meeting. So that's all we've got.
Thank you. I would just like to say I hope to see everybody at the Taste of Westmont. I'll be in the beer tent, so stop by and say hello, invite some tickets. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, seconded by Commissioner Pill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.